We have one person on Zoom. All right. Well, this hearing is called to order. Today is Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the time and place set for the public hearing on the proposed adoption of a rule pertaining to the Office of Public Instruction. My name is Rick Wooton, and I'm the presiding officer for this hearing. For the two of you that are here so far, I want to apologize in advance. I'm fighting a little bit of a cough, so if I start having a coughing fit and have to pop a cough drop here, I apologize in advance. Montana law requires the presiding officer at rulemaking hearings to read the notice of function of administrative rule review committees, which I will do now. Administrative rule review is a function of interim committees and the Environmental Quality Council, the EQC. These interim committees and the EQC have administrative rule review, program evaluation, and monitoring functions for executive branch agencies and the entities attached to agencies for administrative purposes. The education interim committee has oversight with regards to rule changes proposed by the Office of Public Instruction. Interim committees and the EQC have the authority to make recommendations to an agency regarding the adoption, amendment, or repeal of a rule, or to request that the agency prepare a statement of the estimated economic impact of a proposal. The interim committees and the EQC also may poll the members of the legislature to determine if a proposed rule is consistent with the intent of the legislature, or during a legislative session, introduce a joint resolution directing an agency to adopt, amend, or repeal a rule. The interim committees and the EQC welcome comments and invite members of the public to appear before them or to send written statements in order to bring to their attention any difficulties with existing or proposed rules. The mailing address for the EQC is P O Box two zero one seven zero six Helena, Montana, five nine six two zero dash one seven zero six. Moving on now. The notice of public hearing in this matter was issued by Elsie Arson, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and published on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, in the Montana Administrative Register pursuant to MAR Notice ten dash sixteen dash one thirty-three. Arm one point three point three one one of the Attorney General's model rules, as adopted by the Office of Public Instruction, requires summarizing the major provisions of a notice of public hearing. A copy, a complete copy of the notice will be a part of the official record. As shown in paragraph one, the purpose of this hearing is to consider the adoption of a rule pertaining to education savings accounts. Paragraph two advises the public that the Office of Public Instruction will make reasonable accommodations for persons with disabilities to participate in the administrative rules process. Paragraph three of the notice sets forth the proposed new rule in its entirety. Rather than read the full text, I will summarize it. New rule one sets forth the application process, student eligibility, the ESA contract requirement, the formula for calculating the annual student amount of the ESA, notifications made by the Office of Public Instruction, accounting guidance for school districts, fees and interest on ESA accounts, and the reimbursement procedure. Paragraph four indicates that concerned persons may present data, views, or arguments, either orally or in writing, at this hearing. Written data, views, or arguments may be submitted to Brian O'Leary at the Office of Public Instruction, thirteen hundred eleventh Avenue, Helena, Montana, five nine six zero one, and must be received no later than five P M. on June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Paragraph seven advises interested persons that an electronic copy of the notice of public hearing is available via the Secretary of State's website. Paragraph four provides an email address where comments can be submitted electronically. Paragraph six of the notice advises persons that the Office of Public Instruction maintains mailing lists on a variety of topics and tells how they can get on these lists. That's a list of interested persons. I omitted a word earlier. Excuse me. Anyone interested in being to the, in being added to the Office of Public Instruction list of interested persons for future mailings regarding rules on this general topic or of other areas of public interest, there's a sign up sheet on the table near the entrance to this conference room. Paragraph eight states that the bill sponsor contract contact requirements of two dash four dash three oh two of the M C A do apply to this proposed rule action and have been complied with. The legislation's primary sponsor was contacted by email on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Paragraph nine provides that pursuant to the requirements of two dash four dash one eleven M C A, the Office of Public Instruction determined that the adoption of the proposed new rule will not significantly and directly impact small businesses in Montana. Paragraph five states that I have been designated to preside over and conduct this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to collect verbal comments for and against the proposed rule change, rule adoption, and gather public input concerning the rule. If you are recommending specific language changes, please submit them in writing. This hearing is not a question and answer session. If you have technical or procedural questions, staff will be available following the hearing conclusion. Following the close of comments, the Office of Public Construction will, as required by law, summarize the comments made and respond to them. The summarized comments and the Office of Public Instruction responses will be published in the Montana Administrative Register as part of the rulemaking process, and the final notice will be sent to each person or organization that makes a final, a formal comment. The presentation will be statements of proponents, then opponents, and anyone else wishing to be heard. You may also submit a copy of your comments. Does everyone who wants a copy of the notice of public hearing have one? Okay. Has everyone who wants to comment or express support or opposition of the proposed rule changes signed in? And I know we have here. Uh, if not, please do so now. I will call the people from the list. So please identify yourself for the record stating your name and whom you represent, if anyone. Are there questions regarding the comment procedure? Hearing none? Sir, please identify yourself and and let yourself be heard.
Mr. Wooton, thank you. My name is Robert Jones. I go by Bob. And I am a Helena resident. I am a retired industrial organizational psychologist and faculty member at Missouri State University for twenty-eight years. But I've also been in practice in industrial psychology for many years. Prior to that, well, two things are why I'm interested in this topic. But first, I have a procedural question. I do have specific questions that I would like to find out more about to help inform my own thinking about this. And and I know it's not supposed to be a question and answer session, but I'm wondering to what extent I can pose questions along the way here.
You get, once we close the hearing on whatever you have to say about the rules, once we're off the record, I would be happy to answer any question I can.
Excellent. That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Wooton. So, um, right. Part of my training and graduate study by chance was that I was a graduate assistant at the Nice Hunger Center for M R D D children, is what they refer to it as, and I collected and managed their data directly under the supervision of the head of the Nice Hunger Center for one of the years, that, one of the two years I was there. And, um, so I have knowledge, specific knowledge of some of the tremendous complexities of special needs, that there are all kinds of different children with all kinds of different special needs. And so I know that that's a huge part of the issue here. Uh, it's kind of like homelessness. There are all these different reasons why people wind up with similar kind of problems. Not similar in other ways, but similar in that regard. And then the other reason that I'm here is a very, very personal one. My children, both of my sons are graduates of special education programs in Springfield, Missouri. And, uh, we are extremely proud of them both, and they've done exceptionally well, uh, partly as a result of that high quality education that they received from the public education system in Springfield, Missouri, and the state of Missouri. And it's a big part of the reason we stayed in a place like the Ozarks rather than coming back up here, which the Ozarks are very nice and pretty and everything, but it's not Montana, right? And so, um, it, it was a choice point for us that our children could receive this kind of high quality education at the taxpayer's expense. And why would the taxpayers then choose to provide this kind of high quality education to our special needs students? Well, partly because parents like us, who are good taxpayers and, and good citizens for various reasons, stayed in the state because we could receive that kind of educational experience. I know that Montana has very different kinds of issues. We're a huge state, physically dispersed state. And I know that, again, those complex problems of so many children are at stake. I, I am an opponent so far of this proposal, primarily because I think you're passing a hot potato. In other words, rather than following our constitutional mandate for the state to provide quality education, the equal quality education for all children, we're passing the ball along to a bunch of untested, in some cases, plain old fashioned, unknown entities who do not have standing of any kind with any sort of educational accreditation, with any kind of accountability mechanisms. So you create a separate school board, and then who oversees this new school board? Does the state of Montana? Who, who's the accrediting agency? Who are the people looking at this problem? And of course, the answer to that is why nobody. It's off on our own doing what we want to do, which is wonderful. That's Montana. I love Montana, right, for that reason. But it doesn't mean that the children who are especially vulnerable children are receiving the kind of quality education that they are by constitution required to receive. So I've had a chance to really air my issues here, where I usually would have had, you know, free sentence. But it strikes me that this is a, a bad solution. It's a, it's an expedient uh, that answers questions of how, how can O P I with the limited resources available to O P I uh, serve this very interesting, very difficult population to serve? And, uh, so, uh, you know, you think that this will work somehow, we'll toss the, we'll toss the potato out into the crowd and hope somebody picks it up off the floor before it smashes, right? I don't see this. And, and I know, again, I'm no expert in, in special education. I'm somewhat knowledgeable about it personally and from my experiences with stats. But I really doubt, uh, in, in my mind, that this is going to be a quality education, an equitable quality education for all Montana special needs students in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I see we have one person on Zoom, uh, identified by the name Ashley Bianco. Ms. Bianco, would you like to speak? If you are, I believe you're muted, so I can't hear anything.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and, and let us hear what you'd like to say.
Hi, uh, my name is Ashley Bianco. I'm just a legal intern, just watching.
Okay. And let's see, I, I, well, I am spotting a couple of the names up there now. If anybody else would like to speak, please identify yourself, and we'll go from there.
My name's Christina Vieira McGill, and I'm the commissioner for the Montana Catholic Schools, representing all twenty Catholic schools in the state of Montana.
Thank you very much. And would you like to be heard today?
Um, yeah, I mean, obviously, as, uh, representing the twenty Catholic schools, we have a vested interest in this, um, topic and possibility. Currently, our Catholic schools serve many students with all kinds of exceptionalities. And the fact that our parents are sacrificing so very much to pay tuition on top of services that, um, aren't offered in the school setting, this opportunity would really open up a lot, um, for our parents and relieve a lot of, um, financial strain that they are suffering from. And just, you know, for food for thought, if you're following things around the country, you can see this type of scholarship or whatever you want to call it, um, happening throughout the country. Um, Utah First Scholarship is probably the very most recent that was recently passed. Um, all along the same lines, giving parents, in Utah, it's eight thousand dollars, and they can apply it towards tuition if they find that a private school setting can better serve the needs of their child. And so I'm hoping that Montana can follow suit, uh, because I think in the end, all of us want what's best for children, and we want the children to be in a setting where they can be best served.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on the Zoom who would like to speak? Let's see. I see there's a raised hand.
I would. My name is Jennifer Duke.
Oh, thank you, Miss Duke. Please, please go ahead.
Yeah, so I am actually a public school teacher by trade. Um, spent many years teaching in the high school, middle school, elementary in the state of Montana in both rural, rural settings as well as larger school setting. And we are up here in northwestern Kalispel, uh, no, northwestern Montana and Kalispel. And I'm a foster adoptive mom. I have a ton of education, a ton of special education background. I spent a ton of years advocating in education to be able to help these kids. And I find myself in a situation where I have two children who are adopted out of the state of Montana's foster care system that before the middle of kindergarten year, I have a child who was basically told that the school district could not help them in any way. She was secluded into a classroom all by herself with headphones and a computer. And as a parent, especially as an education parent who has spent many years in the special education and spent many years working in school education to watch my child not be able to be served at school with all of the things that are set in place to be able to help them, I found myself in a world of families that are in the exact same position. There are children, so many children that are in need of help, and our public schools are not able to meet those needs. There, there's so many things over the last twenty years of being in education that I could point out at this point. But for me in Montana, with two children who I had to walk away from teaching school to be able to take care of these children who we have brought into our home, who needed our help, to be in a position where the state of Montana has not allowed us to have any kind of financial help, yet we're required to pay taxes, we're required to help provide for our public schools, but the public school can't do for our family. I don't understand why there is any kind of barrier in the state of Montana for families who have children who need something other than what the public school is offering. And the fact is, as a public school teacher and my experience in that, there's a lot of families that expect the public school to be able to take care of their kids because they don't have other options. But we have here in Kalispel, we have a shortage of teachers. That's incredibly ridiculous. We have children. I can't even tell you how many kids I know of here that are struggling with their school education. I would prefer to be able to bring my kid into a public school and to be able to have her get what she needs. Actually, I have two children who need this. And I have multiple friends, multiple families, that we are banding together to try and work together, but to not have any financial help and then to have the expenses we have in all sorts of areas. This is, this is something that I think is necessary, especially living in a country full of freedom. Why, why wouldn't we provide families with an opportunity to be able to take care of their kids in the way that they find best? I mean, thirty years ago, what homeschooling was is, was versus what it is today, the resources that are available. Like, I can't remember the lady's name, the, the one that lives with the Catholic schools that she was talking about. Across the nation, there are programs in most of the states I've looked at that provide help, financial help for families in these situations, and even beyond that, it will take an I E P and that will provide special education services outside of the public school for these families because of these programs that come in. So I'm a huge supporter of this. And at the moment, I just found out about this three, four days ago. So I didn't even know about it. So my children are not even able to participate in it yet. But I think that this is something that is huge. I think this is a big thing to be talking about. And this is not a matter of public education has to provide this. This is a matter of we have a crisis in public education, and they're not able to provide it in our public schools right now for a lot of these kids. My child in particular, both of my children are not being able to be provided for in this public school system. So I'm having to do it at home, which is fine. I just need the help. I need the support.
Thank you, Ms. Duke. Is there anyone else on the Zoom meeting who would like to speak? Giving people time in case they need to unmute themselves. Okay, hearing none. Uh, does anyone have any written comments or data to submit at this time?
Is my allowed to comment twice or?
Mister, Mister, Mister Jones has asked if he could add on to his comment. Uh, since we are not overwhelmed with people and have plenty of time, I would be happy to hear you add on to your comment, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Wooton. And I, Ms. Duke, if you're still listening, uh, my heart goes out to you, um, very much. Not just because of your public service as a, as a school teacher, public school teacher, uh, but as a parent of special needs children. I have my, have my hanky, um, handy here. I guess that one of the other concerns that I haven't voiced, um, but which I think is considered, considered important in this discussion is whether public funds or any kind of public subsidy should be offered to religious organizations. And I, my apologies to superintendent of schools, um, for saying this, but, um, I know that there have been lawsuits around funding, uh, using public money to fund private education. And I don't see that in this proposal, but it is a line that I would like to see strongly drawn. That's a, a First Amendment problem of establishments of religion. And I, I am a, I fear a very strong opponent of giving any kind of subsidy to any kind of religious organization, however wonderful it may be. And I certainly think the Catholic Church does a lot of good things, including education. But I think that's a really important line, and, and I think it's a line that's potentially expensive uh, to the taxpayers of, of the state of Montana because there will almost certainly be some kind of challenge, and Mr. Wooton's on staff, but there will probably have to be other attorneys brought in and that sort of thing. So it becomes an expensive proposition as soon as you start giving money. The number that I have heard about, not the savings accounts, but voucher programs, uh, in general, is that ninety percent of the money that is given from public funding in states that allow this to uh, other entities than public education, ninety percent goes to parochial or in other ways, religious schools. And I don't think that's a good idea. I think that's, that's taking money away from our public education system, which is, as you, as Mrs. Duke said, it's already stretched very thin and getting stretched thinner in recent years. Um, and giving it to organizations that, uh, really are not about the public. They're about their particular parochial needs and interests. And again, I don't have anything against funding your parochial needs and interests at all. But I do have, I am against giving public funds to that, especially when public funds are so scarce. I'd like to see us actually fund our teachers and not be the lowest paying state in the union for public, starting public teachers, which we are currently. So.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Does anyone else join us who would like to comment?
If, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to make a comment again. This is Jen Duke again.
Fair enough, Ms. Duke. We still got plenty of time.
Awesome. I mean, I, I agree, and I don't know what your name is, sir, that was just chatting, but, um, the commentary that you were making about it being the religious funding of things, from everything that I've researched and anything that I've looked at, um, anytime that these funds that are taxpayer allocated for education are pulled back in and put back into, um, a, a special education or any education outside of the public school, anything that I have seen, there are very strict limitations on what can and cannot be be reimbursed with. And I was looking through all of this with the special education savings account. And from my understanding, um, across the board, pretty much anywhere, um, if it is used for a religious purpose, those funds cannot be reimbursed through these types of programs. Um, with that being said, I think we go back to those, you know, those rights that we have as U S citizens. If, um, I mean, for example, here in, we're up in Kalispel. There are multiple, um, private entities, private schools here that would love to have served my children. So I did research everything that was here, irregardless of what the religious affiliation was, um, because I needed a place my children could go. Well, the, the schools that are here cannot serve my child with their special education needs because they do not have highly trained individuals because they're working on a private budget. So they can't hire somebody. But in our situation, like, we have Medicaid for my children because they're foster adoptive children. From my understanding, Medicaid will pay for a one-on-one aid in a public school. Our public school would not get us a one-on-one aid. They refused. They said it was not possible, that it would not happen, et cetera. In, in my situation, why as a homeschool mom would I not be able to find somebody who's a one-on-one aide for my child and have that same resource as a homeschool mom? And from my understanding, there's no way to do that in homeschool. In public school, they're supposed to be, but the public school put all the barriers up and wouldn't let it happen. The private schools here would have been willing to do something, um, irregardless of their religious situation. I do not subscribe to the same religion as they do. But they would have been willing because they understand the, the dire need in the areas that we are living. But they don't have the resources to be able to access those programs either. So Medicaid would take care of things, except for our school system wouldn't. Private schools can't, and I can't as a private entity. So, and that type of situation, what, what kind of thing would, would work? I, I don't know anything that would, other than being able to provide that money back into the parents' hands. And I know our state has not allocated education funds like it should. A hundred percent, I agree that we should have way more funds allocated into education. We can look at all the states around us and see how they allocate into the education system. And we can see that Montana has thousands and thousands of resources that could allocate into that education fund to increase the pay for teachers. But that's not going to solve our problem if we don't have systems in place that are functional for these types of kids.
Thank you, Ms. Duke. So I just mentioned it a moment ago, asking whether anyone had any written documents to submit at this time. Then remind you all that all written data, views, or arguments must be submitted so that the department receives them no later than five P M. on June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Seeing no other hands up for comments, I thank you for the, your participation and close this public rules hearing. However, as required by section two dash three dash one oh three of the M C A, the Office of Public Instruction provides an opportunity for the public to comment on any matter within its jurisdiction other than regarding a contested case or other adjudicative matter at any public hearing or meeting it conducts. Comments made from this point forward will not be a part of the record for the rule hearing that just concluded. The record is still being made, the record still being made will serve as the official minutes of this portion of the meeting. Does anyone wish to comment on a matter within the jurisdiction of the Office of Public Instruction other than the public rules we've just discussed? Seeing none, I adjourn this public comment portion of the meeting as well, and hope everybody has a wonderful Monday. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.